We can come to order. Call the meeting to order. If everybody will rise, please. Cody, would you please do the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ray, would you please lead us in our prayer and location?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this blessed day that you brought us. We thank you for all the safety and glory that you've given us in our lives and each and everything. And for everyone that's here, we're glad that you're able to be with these people, watch over this gathering, be able to give them the honor and the judgment that they need to make the right decisions and to help this city grow and prosper and go in the right directions for what you have been in your will. We thank you, Lord, for all the gracious things that you do in our lives. We ask that you be with all the police and the firemen and everyone that's part of this city. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Is your role called, though?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Proton Rutledge?
Here.
Councilman Weaver?
Here.
Councilman Cooper?
Here.
Councilman Rutledge?
Here.
I mean, yeah, standing for some here. Mayor, you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you. First, I want to say the, in the opening remarks, that a special thanks for Phil and Don Weaver for coming together and taking their time to work on some newly proposed policies and procedures that Coffee City is developing and looks to approve. One was policies and procedures for the employees. The other was for the city council itself, so we could have some guidelines and rules present. And also, I'd like to announce in this meeting, there will be no open forum. So, the next item on the agenda is number six, Consider an Act Upon the Consent Items, seven, eight, nine, and 10. That is, the approval of the minutes from the city council in June's meeting, as written, to approve the city check register for the month of June 2019, to approve the EDC check register for the month of June 2019, and additionally, to approve the EDC hot account check register for June 2019. Give you a few minutes to review that.
If no one has any questions, then we've done our allotted time on review. I would like to make a motion that we consider an act upon consent items number seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Well, sir.
All in favor? Carrie. Uh, the next item is the mayor's report, and I just have a few things to report. It's been a busy month. Publication, excuse me, of the ordinance limiting the time for open records request was published in the newspaper of record, which is the Frankston Citizen, and is now enforceable. The open position was posted for receptionist was also published in the Frankston Citizen, and we have received two applications. The notice of the acceptance for planning bids for the city was also published in the Frankston Citizen. To date, we have received one bid. Road conditions also in Hysaw addition has been addressed with Henderson County. This is from, reported to me by Chris Moore, Fire Chief. The projected date for the improvements in Hysaw is going to be August of 2019. They were pending the rain, making sure that the rain had finished that we were getting. So, we can look forward to those. I would like a firmer date, but as far as the county is concerned, that's the extent that they've given us. I've received a garage sale complaint from Hysaw, a neighbor in Hysaw, and would like an opportunity to discuss. I know that there was a prior ordinance at one time, and there was a repeal of that ordinance, to my knowledge. That's my understanding of that. So, I'd like if we can discuss those at the conclusion. And all of these will be open for discussion. Also, one council seat is open, and I'd like to make a request from council members to submit nominees, recommendations for place one to be appointed at the next meeting in August. And then, also, Phil had mentioned to me that it might be a good time to think about having a town hall. So, I'd like for the council to consider a timeframe that would be good for having a town hall that we can discuss the future of Coffee City. It would piggyback off of our strategic planning session that we had earlier this year. Also, on Wednesday at 10:30, for any of the council members who would like to be a part of this, K E T K is going to come. They have a program that they are doing. They go to certain areas, cities, and communities, and they recognize the first responders, the fire department, and the police department as a way of giving back to the community. They provide lunch, so it's an open invitation for you. It will be a live broadcasting. So, if you would like to attend on behalf of the city, that would be great. I think it's wonderful. Wednesday at 10:30, this Wednesday.
It's Tuesday.
Yes. Day after tomorrow. I know it's not much noticed. They came and visited with us today and selected us. Now, at the end of the year, they say that, and they've done this in Lyndale and also Noonday. Yeah, and Cogor. They, at the end of the year, we will all be placed in a drawing, and there will be a $5,000 donation given to the city. Whoever is winning the, whoever wins that drawing. So, based on my report, I'd like to open it up for discussion regarding these items.
What kind of garage sale complaint did we have?
There is on the corner of Duval and I think Pinedale. There is a trailer that sits there, and it's kind of like a perpetual garage sale that they're having. They do clean it up, but they are still stacking it and covering it, and it's unsightly. But the complaint was that we're getting a lot of traffic, and of course, that comes with garage sales. But, so I just, I just had a question on regarding the prior ordinance that I had seen and the repeal of that said ordinance, and if any of you have knowledge regarding the ordinance or what action?
In Smith County, you can only have so many a year.
Oh, and I think during the past discussion, we discussed Frankston, and they were collecting $5 for it, and it was of the opinion that wasn't worth the effort. While we're collecting just five bucks, and it takes more paperwork than that. And according to the people I talked with in Frankston, most of them, whenever I stop at Frankston Yards, they'll ask, well, did you pay $5? Oh, yeah. But it's just, it seems to be, it doesn't serve a particular purpose. The $5 gives them a license to, and anyway, the ordinance could be passed, but I think the long and short of this, and I'd like to make the long and short of it, wasn't worth the effort.
Well, but from Riley's point, I think he said Tyler could only do five a year.
Something like that.
That might be.
That's a lot of them.
Well, unless it's a perpetual where they're doing it on a...
Yeah, they're doing it almost...
I mean, they have nothing to sell, so it'll be perpetual because that truck will be there forever. No, it's, it's just a dumpster. They'd be better off just pulling up a dumpster to the place and calling Goodwill and saying, come haul it off. I can't imagine that they're making any money at all. So, I think they're going to figure it out on their own because, I mean, that's a lot of hours to put out there to sit and make nothing.
Especially from their seat.
Yeah, so I think, I think it'll take care of itself on its own if they want to do something with that behind.
I don't remember the past ordinance, so they could be missed.
So, then let me pull the past ordinance and let's revisit in August. Does that sound satisfactory for discussion?
As far as recommendations for our council, which is our place of honor, I think whoever we suggest, we should highlight their backgrounds and what they've done to, you know, to make sure that we have somebody that can actually contribute. So, before we, before we make, before I take a vote, I'd like to know something about them.
Right, right.
So...
Okay. Well, my goal would be to maybe put that for next, for August, maybe. I don't know if we can do that.
This is July, so that's the next meeting?
Yeah, September.
I'd say September. If we can get the information upfront so we can discuss it in August, then we can vote, and maybe, I, depending on how quick that comes together, I think that's going to take a little time. And I'm not going to throw a name in the hat without talking to them.
Right. You're going to put the whole number of those, okay. All right. Riley, you have any? Terry? All right. Well, we'll just put these on, maybe announce that that's my report, and we will discuss place one and some recommendations, August, September, September, August. But I'd like for...
And a year and a half.
Twenty, 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 yeah, twenty, twenty. So, I just want you guys to be, have that foremost in your mind so we can get the slot here. The next item on the agenda is to consider an act on the adoption of personnel policies and procedures for Coffee City. That's your big packet here. I think we've made the majority of the corrections that need to be made. Of course, with our eyes, we always find something. There's some numeration on page that's right where it says, the City of Coffee City Government Mission. There's some renumbering that needs to occur there. And there was one, also one other correction that stated city secretary, and it should be city mayor.
That was under 1-03.
Yeah, 1-03.
Yeah, that's a good one to bring up on the section 103. It says, "These policies apply to all city employees, volunteers, or reserves, unless otherwise specified by state law." So, this would imply, apply to all volunteers, such as the volunteer fire department, anybody that's volunteers. I think that they ought to be, I think that's very important, that they ought to be aware that they now have...
Right.
That they now have a large set of regulations that they've never had before. And I know that the city works largely on a volunteer basis for volunteers, especially the volunteer fire department. And I think they need to be aware that we now have this manual that's going to follow on...
Upon approval.
Pretty much so.
Yeah, boilerplate, but upon approval, everybody will get a copy. And we, we will have a signature page that they have received and reviewed it.
By every, when you mean, every volunteer?
Yes.
I shouldn't say, but do you think that's going to hurt any of our volunteer effort?
I don't believe so, Don, because most of it, like Phil said, and how I typically tend to view these things, it's pretty boilerplate, which means it's pretty routine for, for you to have guidelines, you know? Whether you're working in any type of organization or environment, you know, the guidelines. Without guidelines, there can be no administrative action taken if need be. And for myself personally, I always feel real good. You give me a guideline, I know what box I can operate in. And with that said, you know, I can be compliant. I know what it takes to be compliant.
Well, and I also make the comment, if they have a problem with this, then they can address it back to the city.
Right.
But if they have a problem with the basic parts of this, I'm not sure we want them.
Okay, well, just to let them know, I think the terms that you use for administrative action can be taken on them with this.
Well, the only thing we do to a volunteer is they don't come back.
That's correct.
Right.
You're not getting paid anyway, so you're not harmed in a meaningful fashion.
Okay.
I would make the proposal that we accept the new personnel policy and procedures manual.
Well, sir.
All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. The next one is a set of guidelines. Item number 13, it's to consider an act upon the adoption of council rules and meeting procedures. And it's, it's again, pretty boilerplate. It just lines out. The city previously has always just followed a guideline from the TML handbook. So, a lot of this has to do with things that are pretty typical in what we would encounter in a meeting. It talks about the general governance, our responsibilities, et cetera. And it also talks about how our meeting times, the locations, the frequencies, ordinances, how we're going to pursue ordinances and resolutions, land use hearings. So, that's pretty common. Motions and debate, public comment and voting, things that we should know. But I also felt like with new council members coming on, this is a good item for them to be able to review, and it sets the standard. Talks about ethics and decorum, talks about interactions with city staff. Also has a provision for censure and then any amendment and repeal for any of the decisions or ordinances that would be made.
Anybody we throw out there for these seats that's vacant should be given a copy of this.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, absolutely. And that's the goal, is just to bring in some information.
Talk based on the Roberts Rules of Law that's been around for centuries, I guess, so...
Well, I know that I was present during the reading of this, and on chapter four, we have a whole section called land use hearings. But I don't know if you ever, ever had one in the history of Coffee City, a land use hearing?
Unless it's approving the plot changes, that's the only land use I've been involved with.
That's correct. But anyway, we really have kind of a limited real estate in Coffee City to begin with, and I really don't even see a purpose for even having chapter four even in existence when we have really no ordinances or anything to even apply to land use hearings.
So, what are you saying?
Well, I'm saying I'd like to just remove it. If we're not using it, and you know, just adding for sake of having it is...
And won't it hurt to have it?
Well, it's, it's something that we don't have. And my first question, Phil, was, was, when have we had one in the history of Coffee City? My second comment was, we have very limited real estate in Coffee City. And so, I can answer your question. Those would be my two responses. Non-usage, limited real estate, that would be the harm, and why mess with it?
My comment would be on that, would be just strictly the fact that the land use hearings, the verbiage in the title lends a real broad scope.
That's right.
Which, which we don't necessarily have, you know, that we've not worked with in Coffee City. But yet, there are some items in here that would be pertinent if anything did come up, that we would at least have some type of structure that we could refer to.
Would this have helped us in the case of the party, what, a year ago?
No, not at all, but... Anyway, we passed an ordinance for that. We did pass an ordinance specifically on the party.
For the noise deal, yeah.
We did pass an ordinance dealing with that. But that's, this is land use, and that was, well, we did pass an ordinance specifically...
We had a lot of cars on the road and stuff.
We dealt with that. We dealt with it.
You know, I agree that we haven't really used it, but I don't, I don't really see where it's an issue, where it's going to hurt anything. As the mayor said, if something comes up, then we've got something that we can call back all without us sitting around here going, what are we going to do?
Well, as the mayor said, it's broad usage, in other words, it covers a lot. And so, basically, this is a catch-all for anything that we want to do in the future.
Well, it's also pretty specific in here if it doesn't fit the thing, the specific situation. And all of it talks about attorneys, and so it's going to be looked at hard, so...
But it, it's for guidance, basically.
What do you think, Riley?
Leave it in there. We can always take it out.
That's true. Never happen.
Well, if...
Never take it out.
But if you, but I agree, if you, if we never have an occasion that it's applicable, then no harm, no foul, to me. That's my opinion. But if it ever came to that, yeah.
Carrie?
Terry, what do you think?
I haven't studied it enough to really, so I kind of, we can just leave it out for now. We can always add it later if we think we need it.
I'll go with that, take it out. All right.
Well, I'll make the motion that we take out chapter four, land use hearings. And as far as the rest of it, it'll stay.
So, you're saying we approve it as?
With the removal of chapter four, land use hearings.
Okay, all, do we have a second?
Well, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now, the next item on the agenda is Consider an Act Upon the Fiscal Year Budget 2019, 2020. We have three minutes to review that.
You're not adding any police cars this year?
No.
No, sir. Need to call that maintenance man.
Work on L E, that's probably good enough.
Need to call that maintenance man.
It looks like there's a lot of stock right into his proposed budget, and I don't have any questions. So, if it's just a matter of making a motion to consider an act upon the FY 2019 budget, I would like to make a motion, Phil.
Could I speak to this a little bit first?
Oh, please.
Part of the new rule, I can't speak after you make a motion.
Oh, okay. Very good, Phil.
So, I read, I did read part of it.
Go ahead.
The, the main differences in what you originally had from our budget meeting and from our last meeting is the police department came together and really, uh, there, there were you, they took out like $10,000 that they had said earlier they needed, and then they came back and said, okay. But now, we also need a few other things that most of those they actually bought in. Last year's fiscal dollars, Jim has been working diligently trying to get all that done before June, or June 11st, so that's, that's where you'll see. Also, in there is under in-house warranty collection, the $38,000 that they've committed to do is a big, big help for this year. And the, I think that was actually on the very last sheet you saw, but frankly, there's been so many of them that my brain's mixed up. But the numbers at the bottom, you see, we do have a slight loss for the year from standard operations, which frankly, I think will, that'll change, but it will monitor. But we want to be sure we covered it. And, but we do have the additional funds balance of $44,000 that can be used if, should we have that. And we've got to put that in the numbers that we provide to the counties, so... Okay, Donna.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I don't see the ticket stuff for the court.
It was in the, that's what you just did, in the last, end of the year.
For the court.
For the court. I thought you had it in there.
The 7,900. It was on my stuff that I gave y'all, but I don't see it on here.
No, it ain't on there. Computer expenses under is for the, all of the group is $6,000. I never saw that number, Shalina. I'm sorry. And what is that for?
When we had the budget workshop, the police department, they're going to go to the ticket writers.
Ticket writers.
Doug got with Net Data and got a quote from them on what it was going to cost for Net Data to take their push. Is that what, how y'all were funded, where it pushes that to the court? And then they can load it and put it in.
That was not in any of your numbers?
No, sir, that's court side.
That's the court side. I'm sorry, because that's what I was asking you earlier today when I was asking you about those numbers.
Yeah, it was like the 7,900.
Yeah.
It, it's fine. It's fine.
Well, it's not fine if it's got to be in there. It's got to be added.
Right.
I mean, they can, um...
Yeah, it goes, we all page two.
I can still enter the tickets. It's not so much of a chore. I would like to be able to, you know, for, for both of them to co-mingle. If we need to wait and do that next year, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yes, sir.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Rutledge, what's the AFB for PD M... Mr. Rutledge, what's the A F B for P D M T Bs?
Available fund balance.
What, what does that mean exactly? Is that?
That means if we have an over expenditure in that particular account, for example, the one that's, the A F B for computer expense, we have that set at six thousand.
Okay.
Actually, no, we have it set at zero.
Yeah, we didn't pull it.
Because we didn't use it last year when we set it there.
Okay.
And we thought we had the computers nailed down pretty good. But this, if, if it, you know, the, for repair and maintenance, we got ten thousand. So if we went over our total expenses that we budgeted for repair and maintenance, it would come out of that fund.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not going to need that. We got our M D Ts in last year, so.
You're not going to need the thirteen six?
The, the five thousand on, on that, on that item right there.
Oh, is that what the M T Bs are?
Yes.
Okay.
We were able to outfit everything under the auto expense under the two units.
I suggest that, that we amend this.
Okay.
Budget to add the seventy-nine hundred under the computer expense court. And we removed the five thousand from the available fund balance for the M T Bs.
Which we make a balance of?
Twenty-seven hundred, or twenty-one hundred, which is.
Twenty-nine, okay, twenty-nine.
Yeah. On an overall expense balance of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, that's not a big percentage, so. Can you make those changes?
I can make those changes, which make that sixteen.
You'll be able to make the motions.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if you did. I'll second it.
Okay. I would make the motion that we remove the five thousand dollar budget for the A F B for the M T Bs. And we add under court, under computer expense court, seventy-nine hundred for the new computer stuff we need for the traffic system, added, immediate to this budget.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Motion, Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you, Shalina. And I'm sorry that I didn't make myself clear today when we were doing that.
I thought it was in here for the budget workshop.
Yeah, yeah. Somehow we overlooked it, so I apologize.
A lot of numbers that come up.
Yeah, a lot of numbers on there. Okay, so now item fifteen. Thank you, Justin. Unusable court report, Shalina.
For the month of June, we had a hundred and sixty-three new cases. We had seventy that were dismissed after driver's safety course, thirty-seven after completion of deferred. We had three cases that were appealed to county. We had a hundred and eleven warrants issued. Four cases were satisfied by jail credits, one for indigency. That one was two hundred and seventy-five dollars on the indigency one. We had quarter taxes, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. The collection company, G H S, full band, eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And we have a quarter transfer. I'm not sure if Doug's already done it yet, but it'll be forty-three thousand and eight dollars for the quarter transfer. From the year, we had, it looks like three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight forty-seven total on the citations and total to the general fund was a hundred and ninety-four thousand three fifty-one. Any questions? Any questions?
Wonderful report.
Thank you, Shalina. Cody, would you please give us the police report?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, bear with me, this will be my first time. But in the month of June. Thank you. In the month of June, we had eighty-one calls for service or officer-initiated activities, three accidents, ten agency assists, four alarms, two animal calls, two assaults, four civil matters, two disturbances, one follow-up, twenty-four information calls, one loud noise, ten misdemeanor arrests, four motorist assists, three reckless drivers, eleven reports, one road hazard, two suspicious activities, nine suspicious persons, three thefts, three vehicle impounds, three welfare checks, one harassment call, one nine-one hangup, and one bomb threat. Coffee City Police Department currently has three full-time officers and six reserve officers. And the month of June, we had two hundred and eighty-eight total contacts. Those hundred and forty-three were citations with a total of a hundred and seventy-six violations, a hundred and forty-five warnings, and one voided. Let's see, at the bottom, so we had two community service helpers that picked up trash throughout the city, which equals to two and a half truck beds of trash.
And I, and I overlooked that in the mayor's report, but that was one thing that needs to be acknowledged. Serrato helped with the community service. And Jim, would you like to speak to that? You're probably better.
Well, we, we, we saw on Facebook, someone posted up a picture of Frank and, and two community service people, and they were picking up trash along the road. And the comment was, even the chief gets out and picks up trash, so.
Can I ask a question? I passed by when they were doing that. It looks like somebody was running around with a metal detector. Were they actually looking?
Were they looking for something?
A metal detector.
No, they had the, the little tweezers that you pick up.
Oh, so that wasn't a metal detector?
No, no.
I'm highly suspicious.
I know, because it came through on my, my, my budget, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Edward, would you please give us the fire department report, please?
For the month of June, we had one grass fire, eleven medical calls, twelve trees, three boat calls, one loose livestock hauls, two N B As, and one, two public services on my car. We have sixteen senior firefighters, two explorers. Upcoming event for July the thirteenth, meet and greet in Berryville Park, Red Landing, eleven to three. July the twenty, the twenty-sixth, Texas A and M Fire School. July the twenty-sixth is test the weather sirens. September eleventh, a nine-one-one ceremony.
Yeah, I'd like to interject something in there. He hit on something I should have. Throughout every month, the last Wednesday of the month?
The last Friday each month.
We're going to be testing the sirens for, for Berryville here. It's something that we haven't done in the past lately. But if y'all hear it, unless it's, we're not going to test it, you know, if there's clauses, it's not, but we're going to test the sirens.
What did you say, last Friday of the month?
Yes, sir.
And then?
Last Friday, I remember missing that here, at the end. Last Friday each month at twelve o'clock greet, test the tornadoes on the Sunday.
Sir, do you have that column as a customer?
It's a joke.
You didn't know the ball.
Make sure you tell Vicki what she wants to be making too much of. October the thirteenth, Henderson County Fire School. October the sixth, Eastman Fire School. And October, there's a squirt fest, and then Kristen put the date, October National Night Out. November ninth is veteran pancake breakfast. December the eighth, holiday meal. That's it for the fire department.
Thank you. One, one thing I want to inject too in there is when we were talking about testing our alarms and testing things that need to be tested on a routine basis. Cody Welch was on, on the job, and we had tested our panic alarms for the city. And thank you, good job, Cody. Thank you very much for that. Or, is there anything else, any other business?
Not for me.
All right, may I have a motion to?
I'm going to motion, ma'am, Terry.
Then he'd get it out of my mouth, Terry.
I think that's his twelfth in a row.
His twelfth.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Meeting's adjourned.